Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Good afternoon, everyone. Before we begin today, we will do our normal invocation by starting with a moment of silence. If you'll join me in that. Thank you very much. So, good afternoon and welcome to our Tuesday, November 14th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. I'll call this meeting to order. If you'll rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of the agenda today?
You do. The county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over all items.
Thank you. And do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
I have none, thank you.
I do not?
And I have none either. With that, we'll move on to Item 2, which is Ceremonies and Proclamations. And we are so pleased and honored to have so many friends and colleagues here joining us in the gallery today. Thank you for being here. We'll begin with Item 2A, which is the 2023 Scientific and Cultural Facilities District Tier 3 Grant Distribution. Kim Smith presenting for staff. Hi, Kim.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Voters approved a 1/10 of 1% sales and use tax for cultural facilities throughout the seven-county Denver metro area in 1988 and again in 2016. The 1/10 of 1% sales and use tax equates to $1.00 for every $10 spent. Funds collected as part of the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District, or SCFD, are distributed to each of the seven participating counties, including Adams, Arapahoe, Boulder, Boulders, Douglas, and Jefferson Counties. Each of the seven counties has a cultural council responsible for recommending allocations for its county's annual portion of sales and use tax to Tier 3 organizations. Tier 3 recipients are the smaller organizations that provide more personal cultural experiences in our communities. The Board of County Commissioners approved Douglas County's allocation of Tier 3 grant SCFD funds at a business meeting on August 11th, 2023. The allocation in the amount of $1,536,142.64 was awarded for 11 general operating support and 42 project grants for a total of 53 grant awards. All funds distributed benefit Douglas County residents by enlightening and entertaining through visual arts, performing arts, cultural history, natural history, or natural sciences. Organizations that received a grant award were invited here today to be recognized by the Board of County Commissioners. I would like to take a moment to thank the cultural council members for their dedication and commitment to the council as they spend numerous hours reviewing the grant applications and attending meetings. We did have one of the cultural council members, I don't know if I've seen her yet, but Bethany Claypool was going to try to attend today. We were also maybe going to have Sid Simonsen, who is, was going to listen in online. But just a special thank you to them for all of their review time in making those decisions. We also have a few guests joining us today. We have Jessica Cato and Tim Murphy from SCFD. We also have representatives from the many organizations. And so I'd like to invite anybody to come up and say a few words if they would like to, and then we will begin the check ceremony.
Great. Thank you so much, Kim.
Was that an invitation for Chair to say something?
Sure, yeah.
Hi, my name is Jane Potts. I'm on the board of Ballet Ariel. And this year, we're doing something, oh.
Sorry.
Good afternoon. What a lovely day in Colorado again. My name is Jane Potts. I'm on the board of Ballet Ariel. And this year, we're doing something different than the Nutcracker. Our artistic director, Elena Norton, has, receives a special dispensation from the Lewis Foundation to create a new dance, "The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe." And we're going to be presenting it at the Parsons Theater, as well as in Lakewood and in Thornton. So I invite you to go online and see Ballet Ariel's performance of "The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe." And I encourage you to come and bring all the kids. The costumes are great, and it's going to be a lot of fun. Thanks.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you for the funds.
Any additional comment? Okay, I'll open it up to our Board of County Commissioners for any comment.
It's always nice to see a room full of people. Oftentimes, it's when they're getting checks. But we still appreciate that you're here and that you all provide great activities for our residents, which we appreciate. So thank you for being here and what you do for our residents.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Yeah, yeah. Echoing what Commissioner Thomas said, thanks, everybody, for coming. And thank you very much for our cultural council, for working with staff, doing the hard work to kind of figure out how these funds were supposed to be distributed. And their work, they are appointees by the board, and they get together and spend most of the year working out the details that we're seeing the fruits of today. So thanks to them.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. And I do see so many friends and colleagues here, and just want to extend a tremendous note of thanks to SCFD and the cultural council for the amazing amount of work, the hours and the volunteer time you put into making your selections this year. You know, it's often been said that poets are the true legislators, and you all are guardians of our cultural legacy here in Douglas County and throughout the state. So it's no small undertaking that we make this granting today, and you honor us by your presence. So thank you. Kim?
I believe Jen brought you guys the checks, so if you want to just come out, they will say the names of the organizations if you'd like to come and grab them.
We will come down and make check presentations. And I will tell you, for those that have not done this with us in the past, we have often had actual performances from people showing us their talents and reflecting upon what they bring to their organizations. You are not required to do that. But it is SCFD. If you want to, you're welcome to. So the Commissioners will join you down in a moment.
Thank you, Jared. So the first one I have is the Boulder Museum of Contemporary Art.
Cherokee Ranch and Castle Foundation.
Thanks, James. Appreciate it, buddy.
All right. Friends of Dinosaur Ridge.
The Highlands Ranch Cultural Affairs Association.
I have the Colorado Wind Ensemble. Yeah, where's the saxophone? He used to play one of those.
Good to see you. Yeah, thank you for all you do.
The Highlands Ranch Historical Society.
Congratulations. And who would like this? Well, very good. Absolutely.
The Performing Arts Academy, who did a fabulous fundraiser this year. Jim?
Great. Thank you.
Okay, well, this is also how it's done. Hawk West. And we have a live hawk in the back. Wow.
How are you?
Of course, absolutely. Thank you so much for being here.
Please, everybody, have their attention focused back. There you go. Come on!
Folks, through the help of Douglas County, this year alone, we're going to see a million people. We have done over 850 events. I need to get my head examined.
Thank you for having me.
Beat that, George. Well, that's a tough one to follow. Kim Robard's Dance.
Congratulations. And don't forget those.
Thank you.
Town Hall Arts Center.
Thanks so much. No song and dance, no perk. Thank you. Appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
We have Matilda onstage for the holidays, for your families, and come out with us.
Fantastic. Okay, here's another great one. Parker Symphony Orchestra.
Congratulations.
And the Rocky Mountain Arts Association.
Congratulations.
Okay, and I have Young Voices of Colorado. Okay, those are all of our checks. If you received a check today, why don't you come up and join us, and Drew will direct us for a group photo. Well, that was wonderful. I was told that James Holmes will fly in from Cherokee Ranch and Castle next time to beat Hawk West, right? You know, tough to top Hawk West. That was really special. So with that, we'll move on to Item 2B, which is the 2023 Philip S. Miller Grant Distribution. Once again, Kim Smith presenting for staff.
Thank you, Commissioners. The Board approved a memorandum of understanding on August 23rd, 2022, transferring administration of the Philip S. Miller grant from Douglas County to the Douglas County Community Foundation, or DCCF. DCCF provided recommendations for $185,000 in 2023 PSM funds to the Board of County Commissioners. This occurred at a work session on October 31st, and the Board approved recommendations. DCCF recommended funding $110,000 for 24 applicants, providing safety net services or emergency assistance, medical programs, mental and behavioral health, youth programs, services for vulnerable residents, and other community programs. Three organizations that serve older adults were recommended to receive $75,000. Organizations receiving a grant award were invited here today to be recognized by the Board of County Commissioners. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have Mike Wade, who is the executive director of DCCF here, as well as several of their board members. DCCF has prepared checks for distribution today.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kim. Any questions for staff before we turn it over to Mike?
I have none, thank you.
I think it's great that, Mike, thanks for all the work to take on managing the Philip S. Miller funds for us. Love the analysis, love the work that you guys do, and really looking forward to this.
Yeah, I'll reserve some additional comments following Mike's presentation and perhaps comments from others. Mike?
Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here representing Douglas County Community Foundation and our 27 members of our Board of Directors, some of which are here today. If you guys wouldn't mind standing up if you're a board member of DCCF, so we could all say hi. Yes, thank you guys very much. Now, normally, you know I would come up here with a two-and-a-half-hour speech about philanthropy, but with 24 organizations in the room excited to be recognized, I'm going to keep it very short. Just to give a little bit of background on DCCF, you can think of us in an easy way. We're your friends in the philanthropy business. What we do is we help the more than 320 501(c)(3)'s in Douglas County thrive. We do it through a variety of ways, one of which, like today, is grants. Another way that we help is through consultancy services to those nonprofits to help them with their daily operations. We also are the community champions, the regional champions, for Colorado Gives Day, and we manage the Douglas County Gives Program. And last, but certainly not least, we're the holders and managers of the Douglas County Community Emergency Relief Fund, a fund that is at the ready to help our community in the case of an emergency. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about today, but I do want to thank you guys for allowing us to partner with you and the nonprofits. And just one little reminder for those watching as well, the Philip S. Miller grant funds that come to us, which we manage, we manage at no cost. We do that pro bono to help Douglas County and the nonprofits in our community. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Mike. Any questions or comments for Mike?
I have none, thank you.
No questions.
Well, I don't have any questions, primarily because I'm deeply familiar with you and this organization. And, Mike, it's just, it's very humbling to be before you and the Board today. I'm seeing some of the closest friends and allies that the county has, including representatives from our esteemed municipalities. We have Mayor Protam Winshaw, as well as Mayor Jeff Toborg from Parker, and really some of the most amazing C-suite executives and leaders in our business community and nonprofit community. You all are truly my friends and colleagues. And I had an opportunity to speak at the State of Aerospace in Colorado the other day, and I'm thinking about a rocket. You know, when you look at a graph and you think about exponential growth, I mean, the Community Foundation has just launched into outer space. The record-setting amount of funds that you have brought in, the amount of community engagement, and your ability to connect and promote the nonprofits in our community is just, it's beyond my wildest dreams and I think the hopes of our entire community. So thanks to all of you. Greatly appreciate all of you.
Thank you very much.
And I would be remiss if I didn't give a special nod to Marco Fields and the great work of the Community Foundation on the recent Heroes Gala, which was just, just amazing. Yeah. So with that, Kim, anything additional before we distribute checks?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay. I will, do we need any additional? Okay, so with that, I will ask to invite the Board to come down and, again, distribute checks. Prove it.
Hey, man, there's a lady who's sure all that glitter's with gold.
There it is.
And she's buying the Stairway to Heaven.
Nicely done. Nicely done.
Commissioner Thomas?
The Backpack Society. Thank you for what you do to feed kids.
I think I know these people. The Aging Resources of Douglas County.
Bridge of Hope.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Castle Country Assisted Living Incorporated. Congratulations.
Okay, I have Colorado Lions Camp.
And the Crisis Center.
Castle Rock Senior Activity Center. Congratulations.
Doctors Care.
Colorado Agricultural Leadership Foundation, CAF. Congratulations.
Douglas County Library.
The CSU Extension in Douglas County, Go Bears. Congratulations, Commander. Congratulations. Oh, wait a minute. I mean, I could hang on to this if you'd like. I could send it to Greeley if you'd like. Oh, okay, there we go. That's what.
Okay, I've got the Friends of Douglas County.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Congrats. You know, we are just going to have you all come back up again for a great big picture, but that's fine.
Integrated Family Community Services.
Congratulations. Folds of Honor.
Thank you, thank you.
There you go.
I've got Mano Resource Center.
So I just met this amazing lady today, Dr. Stewart, so I'm happy to give you Lady Trailblazer check. Dr. Stewart?
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Always do what the doctor tells you.
And don't forget those. I'll take it.
Okay, well, here Toborg, I've got a lot of Parker. Parker Senior Center.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Ray of Hope Cancer Foundation. Rocky Mountain Wildlife Alliance.
And you get that.
Thank you. Oh, would you guys mind if I just...
Sure. You gotta come right back up, but that's fine.
You know what, that's okay. I want to illustrate how underdressed I am for this event. Thank you so much, guys. We appreciate you.
Congratulations.
Okay, I've got the Parker Task Force.
Thank you.
And there you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I have Southeast Christian Council.
Well, did the Castle Rock Senior Activity Center or the Colorado Agricultural Leadership Foundation arrive late? In that case, we'll split these up ourselves. No, we're not. No. We'll give these back and staff will get these along to the right place.
Okay, if you got a check today, why don't you come up and join us for a group? If you wouldn't mind holding the big check at the center, we'll have our board up in here. You know the rule now.
I can, I can. I'm still too short to be up here. Well, I got that t-shirt. Have you tightened it up? Just in the back. Thank you. It's so fun. We're right in the middle.
Your turn to ready for the one, two, three. And one more here, one, two, three.
Did you see your stuff? Nice. Yes, it turned out great.
Appreciate that. And as you make your way out, certainly don't feel as though you need to stick with us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. How wonderful, thank you. Cool, thanks.
Thank you.
Cool.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay, with that, as people are finding their way out, we'll move on to Item Three, which is our Consent Agenda. Let me just ask if there's any citizen comment in person or online with regard to our Consent Seeing none and hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through Q of the Consent Agenda.
Second. So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. With that, we'll move to Item Four on our regular agenda, which is Item Four A, A Water Commission Establishing Resolution, Katie Carter presenting for staff. Katie?
Earlier this year, the county commissioners started an initiative to explore the creation of the Douglas County Water Commission. The county has had a keen interest in water provision since the late 1980s and through our rapid growth in the 1990s and early 2000s. Recognizing the importance of water to a strong and thriving community, the board has included water resources as part of its core priorities for many years now. Since we aren't a water provider, the county has strived to create an environment of collaboration where the various water providers can work together to leverage resources to provide water to our citizens. It is this partner agency work over the past decades that has resulted in reduced reliance on the non-renewable groundwater sources from 57% in 2015 down to almost 20% in 2020. This water commission is charged with integrating existing Douglas County water provider plans through collaboration with subject matter experts into the 2050 Conference of Douglas County Water Plan. The board also intends for the water commission to advise them on water topics identified in the Douglas County Conference of Master Plan, addressed in state and federal legislative items, and related to regional and statewide issues. Finally, the board desires for the water commission to broaden public awareness of water supply and provision of services in Douglas County. In preparation for seating members and commencing meetings, the establishing resolution is presented for the board's consideration today. The water commission is made up of 11 members and alternates, with three from each commissar district and two members serving at large. With that, staff's available for any questions or discussions the board may have.
Katie, thank you so much for that. Any questions for staff?
I have none.
No questions. Katie, I just am so thankful for your amazing professionalism, your understanding and depth of expertise when it comes to water issues, and for the amazing work that you've put into this significant project. This is a historic moment for Douglas County, and I am so pleased and honored that this board has identified and seated 11 individuals to fill out the purposes of this water commission. I think we've said multiple times that not having a plan is planning to fail, and for the first time, Douglas County will have a comprehensive 2050 water plan that will encompass all of our county, including the rural communities, which we've heard from our citizens is deeply significant to them. For the last 15 years, upwards of 80 to 90% have said repeatedly that Douglas County should centralize planning around water in our community. That said, I know that we are also blessed to have such great partnerships with our water providers, with water experts, and those that serve throughout the state on this critically important issue. So we know that with this establishing resolution today, the work of this important water commission can move forward. So thank you for that. Let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room or online with regard to this item? Yes, ma'am?
If you could stand at the podium, so unfortunately, we are not miked in the gallery. And as always, if you want to just state your name and where you're from for the record. Sorry. Not used to these things. I, when I first got here, I spoke to several, or I guess one gentleman who worked for the Douglas County, and I felt like, I think I even texted you, Abe, that was the first communication I had to ask you, why is there so much chlorine in our water? And it tastes terrible to me. But it's everywhere. It's not just here in Douglas County, or maybe it's better here, I don't know. I used to drink from the rivers in Blue River in Colorado, just, I could drink from Rocky Mountain rivers, so I know good water. But with aquifers and no snow, it's mid-November, and it should be, you know, average six below right now is our norm for Colorado, and most don't know that. We're crossing so many country lands, mountains, seas, that we don't even know temperatures anymore, that we're on the hottest planet we've ever been. So as we fill an aquifer, it goes to a sand base, is that correct? And then you have to fill it with rain, and only, I think only 30% or more of that water comes from runoff. So how do we sustain this community on just aquifers? When Denver is based on a well system, what is the benefit when we're going into a drought for aquifer? And how do we fill those reserves more and more as, you know, it's kind of like looking at Saudi Arabia and the sand packs. When you empty those aquifers, it takes a lot of rain to get those back up. I don't know much about it, but that's my, when I look at Saudi Arabia or desert, that's kind of where we're at in Colorado. I've been here 53 years, and we used to have to dig out of, you know, we had blizzards and we had four feet, five feet blocking our doors, and we could make igloos and snow slide down. I don't even see, I saw a little flicker of rain the other day. So as we face the hottest temperatures in the history of Earth and the drought that is apparent from, we've, the Colorado River supplies nine states, and a part of New Mexico, part of Mexico, Las Vegas, and all the way up to, I think it is California, yes. And that river runs north, south, west, east, I think, or east, I'd have to look again. But we are at a drought when we can't fill Lake Mead, and those are, Lake Mead and Lake Powell are man-made reserves for, to feed and water into the Colorado River. So what is our solution if we pack those aquifers so much that we can't fill them with the rain, the residual rain we might get, the remaining of, hopefully by April, we get a few showers? I wrote a song, and the first sentence of that song, I won't tell you, it's called "God Cry Tears," for me and my friend today. And the first saying, "Why the earth on fire and so dry?" Most of us wonder why, wonder why God's guy can't cry. God bless America.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional citizen comment? Yes, ma'am? Yes?
Is this just for the water or general?
Yes, this is for comment on the water item. Did you have a comment, ma'am?
I have a general.
About, okay. Any additional citizen comment on this item? Okay, is there any comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay, and with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion. Well, Chair, in your comments, you made, you made reference to the fact that water and the management of water here in Douglas County has been a hot topic for the residents of the county for many years now, certainly ever since I moved here in 1997. And I think it is a time, it is a, this water commission is a commission that's time has come, a place where we can bring together our residents, bring together those who know water here in the county, and get us working together as a county, with a county focus. And maybe that's been part of what has extended this conversation, is this will be the first time that, as a county, we've convened together a body to discuss water, work through the priorities, work through the details, and bring back recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. And so if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve the Water Commission Establishing Resolution as introduced in the agenda.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Aye, any opposed?
I'm opposed, no.
And that passes two to one. Thank you, Katie. So with that, we will move on to Item Five, which is Citizen Comment Organization Comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. If you would, please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments. You will have up to three minutes. Commissioner's comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Is there any citizen comment?
If you want to just state your name and where you're from? Sure. My name is Cynthia Dalton, and I reside at 9660 Kings Mill Lane in Lone Tree. And I'm here today seeking justice for our Commissioner Laura Thomas. There is no oversight, I've discovered, for this commissioner board, except for the citizens of our county. And the citizens have spoken on numerous occasions against the unjust, unfair, and perhaps illegal actions by George and Abe Layden, yet they have not responded or changed course of action. The citizens who overwhelmingly voted for Laura are not being served, and she is not able to adequately do her job. So today, since I haven't gotten any responses, nor have any of the citizens gotten responses from Abe nor George, I'm really addressing my comments to Attorney Jeff Garcia and Manager Douglas Dillard. Okay, I'm not a legal expert, but I am a citizen, and I'm really fed up. I ask you to comment... I ask you to comment and take action. So it seems unfair that Laura was removed as Chair of the Board and replaced by Abe with no justification. It seems unjust that Laura was removed from committees that she successfully participated in and has not been reinstated. It seems unlawful that the Teal family has continually sent slanderous postcards to citizens without any recourse or retribution. And most of all, it seems illegal that Laura's almost $1,200 worth of county expenses are not being reimbursed, and her county credit card was taken away. So I ask for answers from you, Attorney Garcia and Manager Dillard, if possible, and to please take action and correct these grievances, since Abe and George have refused.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional citizen comment? Any additional? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Laura. I know you've done extensive work in this county, no question. You've walked in so many different arenas. I appreciate you, Laura, for what you've done. I don't disregard that. I just know that when I start coming to these meetings in March, we spend a lot of time wondering if this or that or that, and I thought it was a waste of our tax dollar money when we're facing immigration and homelessness and families and not just Laura. So some of the allegations that I saw in her attitude caused a lot of division, I saw amongst the three of them. So I have no alliance or allegiance to any one of them. I just know that what I read, and it's just one instance, she faces three other Republicans running for sheriff in Colorado's June 28th primary election. The deputy who Layden identified as Amanda Walter resigned from the sheriff's office this month, sending in an April 5th letter to Sheriff Tony Spurlock, that the information released about her was crushing, crushing. And I'm sure she feels the same sometimes, so do I. Crushing. We all feel a little crushed. Can we move on from Laura? She has her position. I don't think they're demeaning her anymore. I think, you know, Abe put it to the front face and put her there to say, hey, Laura, we need to work together. Enough is enough. And I think enough is enough. This is my money and my friends here in Douglas County. No more waste on this. And I'm sorry your grievance is just for Laura, but grievance should be for your neighbor, not for Laura. I think she has a job. Your grievance were done with Laura. If I have a grievance, I'll tell you what I faced here in Douglas County. My grievances, I got my house broken in three weeks. I got my person who did my locks, redid my locks, came at 3:00 in the morning, almost raped me. Then I was raped in May, and then throwing a divorce, a car accident, 27 surgeries, and faced a wheelchair. And then no friends in Douglas County, the head of my church betrayed me, they took my daughter, and I was handcuffed and faced mental health, because I've got a history of mental health. If we want a grievance, and I looked at, we're giving 30 billion to Israel, let's give 30 billion to the people that are facing the hardest challenges, put on drugs by our mental health, and demeaned by the lives they have earned. And I'm not demeaning Laura. I would say incredible history she's done. Let's not demean anyone. I'm sure Abe has not walked a perfect straight line either. Let's walk together in this. What are we doing, crushing each other? My nephew put me in the Denver County Jail for two days, and I faced $18,000. Laura, it'll be passed off easy. He has no credibility. He's coming from another state. I took care of my mom in a hospital, she's dying 86%. Unbelievable, the triteness, as I call myself Christian, and I'm not, I don't want perfect Christianity or Muslim or anything else, but my goodness, we're watching a flag of freedom.
Thank you, ma'am. Additional citizen comment? Any additional citizen comment? Troy, any comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any Commissioner comments.
No comments.
Cindy, thank you for being here. I have no other comments.
I also would echo my gratitude to the citizens that take the time to be with us. My focus will continue to be on the good work of the county, whether it's mental health, homelessness, fighting wildfires, addressing all of the public safety issues that are critically important to the 400,000 that we represent and listen to on a regular basis. The focus will not be on me or my ego or calling people here to defend me when the majority of our citizens want us to do the good work of this county. So that will be my focus going forward.
And I'll say it right this year, I have the police officer standing, I put a man...
And ma'am, I apologize. I appreciate you being here, but citizen comment has ended. With that, we'll move on to any additional business. Is there any other business before the Board today?
Chair, I do have additional business before the Board. On Friday, the Colorado General Assembly will be convening, per the call of Governor Jared Polis, to handle two items. And I do have, well, for one of those items, it is to deal with the rise of our property tax assessments and charging the Colorado General Assembly to, you know, come up with solutions. So if it pleases the Board, I do have a resolution that I'd like to read into the record and ask for adoption of.
Please.
I have a resolution supporting the Colorado General Assembly's special session to address the state's historic property tax increase. Whereas pursuant to Colorado Vice Statute 30-11-101, the following resolution is adopted for the welfare of Douglas County. Whereas as a result of record-high property valuations in 2022, Colorado taxpayers are now burdened with historically high property tax increases. Colorado property owners need tax relief. Whereas on November 9th, 2023, Governor Jared Polis called for a special session of the 74th General Assembly. Whereas Governor Polis has stated the purpose of the special session is to urge the legislature to bridge partisan divides and put people over politics to provide immediate property tax relief to Coloradans facing extreme spikes from their 2023 property tax bills. Whereas the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners asks Colorado's lawmakers to provide the greatest possible tax relief for property owners, ensuring such relief benefits those most affected by this crisis, including the state's aging, disabled, and veteran residents. Whereas the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners asks that such tax relief shall be granted while preserving the Colorado Taxpayer Bill of Rights, ensuring essential services, providing transparency, supporting local control, and acknowledging the diverse needs of Colorado's many communities. Whereas the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners support the General Assembly's efforts to provide immediate property tax relief. Be it said resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, ask the Colorado General Assembly to provide bipartisan property tax relief to the benefit of all Colorado residents. This is read and introduced this 14th day of November 2023 in Castle Rock, Douglas County, Colorado, and I advocate for its passage by the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Any Board discussion regarding this item?
I would just like to thank all of the voters who saw through what was in HH, and it was defeated by 20 points. So thank you for understanding what this was about. I have grave concerns about what's going to come out of this special session this weekend, and I, like many, will be watching and hoping that our Tabor refunds, the Tabor reserves are safe, and those funds are not used to backfill anything else that might be accomplished through this session. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. And I would just like to say how proud and thankful I am for the work of this entire Board unanimously fighting against the increase in property taxes and really leading the charge in the state to not only talk about property tax reduction, but to provide $28 million of relief through a reduction in our assessment. We couldn't have done that without the hard work of our assessor Toby Damish and his expert recommendations, but that is the good work of the county that we are focused on, and I'm greatly appreciative of that continued work. I know we'll all be watching this special session and have been actively engaged with our legislative delegation from Douglas County, who no doubt is also actively advocating for property tax reduction, including Representative Lisa Frisell, who served as our assessor for many years. So I will be in support of this resolution pending any citizen comment. Let me ask if there's any additional Board comment before I open it up for citizen comment on this item. Okay. Is there any citizen comment on this item? Any citizen comment online?
I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the Board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
If it pleases the Board, I do have a motion to approve the resolution as just read, supporting the Colorado General Assembly's special session to address the state's historic property tax increase.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
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 And that motion carries three zero. With that, we'll move on to Item Eight, which is our county manager. Anything from our county manager? Okay. And his exceptional county manager report is in the packet. Our next Board of...
Was there one this week?
What's that?
I don't think there was a county manager report this week.
Normally, the county manager report is in our packet, so for citizens looking for county manager information, they can usually find it there. The next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 at 1:30 p.m. We are adjourned.